Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us this morning for our Boynton Beach Government Affairs Council meeting. We are very honored to have Boynton Beach City Commissioner Woodrow Hay joining us this morning. For those that have not attended before, welcome. For those that don't know me, I'm Jonathan Porjes. I am your parking manager here in Boynton Beach. Just kind of an overflow of the program today. We will have our Chair of Government Affairs, Rob Jager, introduce our speaker, Woodrow Hay, in a moment. Woodrow is going to ask that you hold your questions to the end of the program. At the bottom of your screen, you can see a chat box, and we encourage you to put your questions in there. Or at the end, we'll come back to a full-screen panel, and we can ask those questions of Commissioner Hay then. With that, I do want to let you know the program is being recorded, and you can watch it later on our YouTube channel. And I encourage you to visit our YouTube channel as we do record the majority of our educational and virtual programming, and in case you miss something, you can see it then. With that, I just want to say a few personal words. When I started my chamber career, Woodrow Hay was on the city commission and was just appointed mayor of the city of Boynton Beach. And he got together, and I'm sure he'll discuss this in a few minutes, but he brought together the Chamber, CRA and the city, and really formed a great partnership which we've been honored to have for the past eight-plus years. I personally gotten to know Commissioner Hay, and he and his wife are just great people and have been very supportive of our chamber for all those years. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over now to Rob Jager, our Chair of our Government Affairs Committee, and he will make the formal introduction. Rob?
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. Good morning. So you kind of just did the introduction because basically some of the stuff that's on here is what you just talked about. So let me read through real quick. Woodrow has been a leader in South Palm Beach County for over 40 years. He served as a member of the clergy at St. John's Missionary Baptist Church, and is also as Boynton Beach City Commissioner and Mayor. He was elected into the commission in 2007 and then appointed mayor in 2012. He was most recently elected in 2020 for District Two. As mayor, some of his prime initiatives included the city's new branding statement, the foundation of an anti-violence group, and the forging of an alliance between the city, the CRA, and the Chamber of Commerce. He's been a longtime native of South Florida and in South Palm Beach County because his family settled in Delray Beach. He was seven years old in the early 1950s, and then in the early 1950s, he and his wife moved to Boynton Beach. And after he was, after that, he was married in 1969. So like I said, currently he serves in Commission District Two, and we welcome him this morning. And Woodrow, we thank you for joining us. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Rob. It's just good to be here. Before we get started, I just want to offer a special prayer for those who are going through the hurricane. Right now, it's devastating. Category four is nothing to play with. So we've been, we dodged another bullet in South Florida, but our hands of mercy and grace and healing goes out to those families. As Rob just stated, I am a commissioner for the entire city of Boynton Beach, and I represent District Two. Another hat that I wear is that I am an ordained Baptist preacher. So let me warn you for the future. Never give a Baptist preacher a microphone with a captive audience. Rob, as I already told you about my background, I have a variety of topics that I want to share with you about Boynton Beach this morning. My vision for Boynton Beach is to develop, for Boynton Beach to be developed into the model city that it should be. I want visitors to be able to ride into our city and not be able to determine where the slum and blight sections are located in our city. Because the houses and the properties are so well-
Fox or for Get Dry? Yes, Get Dry is mine. It's 561-877-9659.
Need to mute your microphone.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. Please, we all go through that. So by saying that I want the city to look like that, that you won't be able to spot the slum and blighted area, I guess you may ask the question, "Am I dreaming?" And I say I don't think so, because right now, we are headed in the right direction. We have a staff, and David Scott and Mike Simon and Laurie Laveria, our city manager. We have the right people in the right place. But I want to see more projects like Ocean Breeze West, Ocean Breeze East. These are projects that are in Boynton or in the process of being completed. The Block Project, 500 Ocean, The River Walk, A Cottage District, and the list goes on and on and on because Boynton, right now, the very vibrant city, and we're moving in the right direction. So what's happening in Boynton Beach? Good question, Rob. I'm glad you asked. Let's take a look at some of the development projects that are current and some that we're looking down the road for through the CRA and happening in District Two. Currently, we have Ocean Breeze East Apartments located at 700 North Seacrest Boulevard. There are 123 units of affordable residential multi-family rental apartments that's under construction as we speak. The buildings are up and painted. The leasing of those units has begun, and they are scheduled to be occupied by January 2021. CRA partnered with Centennial Management Corporation. Then we have the Model Block project that I just mentioned. There we have 15 new affordable workforce-owned occupied single-family houses that's located on Northwest 11th Avenue and First Street. And we have working together there, the CRA, Habitat, and CDC. Another project, which we all familiar with, is Town Square. The partnership there was with CRA and the city. The public buildings are completed, and let me tell you, they're beautiful on the outside and inside. Those buildings are waiting, that project is awaiting the private sector portion to begin. Then we have another project, is the Streetscape and Parkin Improvement. That's being done on East Boynton Beach Boulevard, that's east of Federal Highway. That's being funded by the CRA and the city. Another project, the CRA has acquisition of properties. For example, 209 North Seacrest Boulevard, we have taken ownership of that property by the end of October, October 31st, 2020. And also, the property at 217 North Seacrest Boulevard. Now that's where the post office building is now, right at the corner there of Boynton Beach Boulevard and Seacrest. We'll be taking ownership of that building January 2023. That will, that's to be used for future development. CRA has acquisition of 401 through 411, East Boynton Beach Boulevard. We're taking ownership on that on October the 31st of this year. That's to be used for future redevelopment. That's just west of, I know most of you know where Bud is, it's Boynton, but there's a row of businesses right along the north side of Boynton Beach Boulevard. We'll be taking over that building. There has been a letter of interest for the CRA-owned property located at 115 North Federal Highway for the purposes of redevelopment into a mixed-use residential and commercial project. I'm very excited about that particular project. It's in a strategic, it's at a strategic location in our city. We have a second letter of interest for the CRA-owned property located at 1110 North Federal Highway. And again, will be for the purpose of redevelopment into a 1,200-square-foot professional office building in the future. Some of the things that, that's currently what's some of the things that's going on in Boynton. I could state others, but I just want to stick to that. Those are the major ones. For the future, looking down the road, the Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Redevelopment Project. The CRA and Centennial Management Corporation partnership for the development of 124 new affordable multi-family residential apartments and 8,500 square feet of new commercial space. Again, exciting things are happening in Boynton Beach. The construction of that particular project is to begin in the fall of 2021. For the future, we also have the CRA's construction of a new 35-space surface parking lot on Northeast Fourth Street, which is adjacent to the Veterans Park. Construction of that parking lot will begin in the spring of 2021. Also in the future, we're looking at East Boynton Beach Boulevard. The complete street beautification. That's a tremendous project. That's been worked together with the CRA, the city, and FDOT. Have a partnership to make that a reality. Construction of that project is to begin in the spring of 2021. Actually, my bad. It's going to start in January of 2023. Another project in the future we're looking at is the redevelopment of the CRA-owned 4.4 Echo Apostle located on North Seacrest Boulevard and Northeast Fourth Avenue into a 32 to 40 new owned occupied workforce, single-family homes, townhouses. That's exciting because we need more affordable homes in our city. Developmental selection of that project will occur in December of this year. And construction will begin in February of 2021. Let me just say that the retail and restaurant occupancy in the city of Boynton, I've had the opportunity of going to some of the ribbon cutting and getting my belly full. There's a new business in 500 Ocean Development called Guaco Go. Interesting. Then there's the Butcher and the Bar, and there's E&amp;O Salon. And the salon, and then there's the Organic Kitchen that I had an opportunity to go to. So Boynton Beach is booming, to say the least. I want to switch the subject for a minute. Impact of COVID-19 on our businesses here in Boynton. Here's what we've done so far with the CRA. We've approved and staff has delivered $1 million in grants of $10,000 to 100 businesses as well as $300,000 in rental assistance for a six-month period to 42 businesses. That's what we've done so far in that area. The Career Source COVID-19-related temporary position. The city of Boynton has partnered with Career Source of Palm Beach County to assist with those who jobs due to COVID-19 or are long-term unemployed. This grant money covers the cost of employing temporary workers to assist with COVID-19-related tasks. The city identified three position classifications that would assist in sanitizing work areas and monitoring for compliance with CDC guidelines in city facilities. An addition of classification would provide Boynton Beach businesses and restaurants with information related to current COVID-19 executive orders. Working with the city, Career Source provided the recruitment for four park monitor positions at $17 an hour, two business compliance specialist positions at $16 an hour, five facility compliance monitor positions at $13 an hour, and eight custodial specialist position at $12 an hour. And as of August 17th, 2020, the city of Boynton has hired seven temporary COVID-related positions. The city continues to work with Career Source to recruit additional candidates for open positions. Those applicants who are interested are encouraged to create an account on www.employflorida.com. Let me say that again. www.employ, E-M-P-L-O-Y, florida.com. And also, we ask that you send a resume to Michelle Sena, hopefully I've said her name correctly, at msena@careersource.com. Let me talk a little about small business CDBG grant program. Great City of Boynton Beach has allocated funding in the amount of $300,000 to provide grants of up to $10,000 to enable small businesses with 25 or less employees or what we call microenterprises, which is five or less employees, including owner, to invest and survive coronavirus pandemic through the payment of payroll, commercial lease property, or payments. COVID-19 safety requirements and inventory, those are the categories that those funds may be used for. Businesses must be located in Boynton city limits, and these city funds must be outside of the CRA district and cannot have received a paycheck protection loan or other COVID-19-related assistance. Funds are still available. The applications can be found on the city's economic website, whyboynton.com. So go to whyboynton.com and fill out the necessary paperwork. These funds are there for you if you qualify. I'll let me talk a little bit about the business incubation. Business incubation can be a powerful tool for economic development and entrepreneurship. Incubators specialize in helping startup and early-stage businesses by providing resources such as office space, legal counsel, access to financing like venture capital, and mentorship. Business incubators can provide entrepreneurs with a supportive environment that can help scale up their business in line with this mission. City of Boynton Beach Department of Economic Development and Strategy provides support in the form of grant financing to business incubators who incubate Boynton Beach businesses. So there again, funds are available. Just check with the city. We have, let me again talk a little more about the city entrepreneurship grants. Each fiscal year, 2018, 2019, the city awarded three separate $10,000 grants into a tenant for business incubators that focus on women and minority on businesses and youth entrepreneurship. The $10,000 is intended to offset the cost fees of the incubator program for Boynton Beach-based businesses. Fiscal year 2021 budget allocates to fund the next round of grants. We're trying to help our businesses. The city will issue P in the first quarter of the fiscal year. City Hall incubation. Additionally, the great city of Boynton Beach has dedicated space in the new city hall to business incubation. Together with the Boynton Beach Library Marker Space, the MakeSpace, and the CRA-City Partnership, the Innovation Center will provide startup and entrepreneurs with the support they need to grow their business. The city of Boynton will have 1,618 square feet of space to be used for that. Direct access to conference space, which is 1,510 square feet, is available for rental. Accessible will be seven days a week. There will be free Wi-Fi and parking, access to public space and cafe, college, university, expert support from our colleges and universities. From our colleges, we have network of volunteers, mentors, and business resources to help foster our entrepreneurial spirit. Private operator, expense-growing and operating innovation spaces virtually and physically. I want to share with you, if I could, share a slide here show you the steps involved in making all of this happen. It is dynamic, and I am very excited about it. I am trying to share my screen now as Jonathan told me.
Go right down to the bottom. I've given you the co-hosting permission.
There it is. You've done well, my friend. Okay. Here you see, let's see, there we go. That's a little bit better. You can see the steps involved in making this a reality. This is the proposed timeline. The RFP will be completed by August 30th of this month. It includes database of prospects, outbound marketing plan, and media strategy. The RFP will be launched on September 7th. That RFP will be due back, deadline is October, September 7th, and due back on October 9th for submittals aligned 24 business days. Also, I want you to notice that the third step in this process will be a shortlist of candidates will be interviewed on October 16th. Interviews to take place on October the 19th through the 23rd. And finally, the fourth step, we will select the top three on October 28th after evaluation with BBTS team. And final interviews on October 30th with the winner to be announced on November the 6th. That's just a little timeline. Next, I'd like to show you talk about the social and racial equity assessment and framework. You will notice, again, if I can get all of this out of the way for myself, as a reminder, the commission directed the city of Boynton to create a framework around five equity sectors. And as you can see, these equity sectors were identified by the commission to address specific areas of racial and social equity. Each sector will represent a committee made up of individuals from the identified social group, city representatives, and from members of the community. Facilitated and by a research university and funded through a research grant. These committees will meet to discuss their respective equity sectors and create a plan that focuses on specific strategies, action items, and policy changes that can be implemented to address racial and social equity in that specific industry sector. And as you can see in the picture, we have health and wellness, education, housing, public safety, and economic opportunity. Also, notice if you will, that we will be reflecting Black and African-Americans, Black and Caribbean Americans, Hispanic American, Asian Americans. The gender and sexuality would be LGBTQ women. Specifics will be special needs and seniors. I will let that just stay up there for a minute because I got one more slide I want to show you, but to begin the discussion with FIU for the development of the scope of work for a community assessment survey, the preliminary approach to this process seeks to convene a series of workshops for each of the sector that you're looking at with community, business, and influencers to develop recommendation to the city. We ask that they also consider including an internal organization equity assessment for city staff. I told you I wanted to talk a little bit about tourism master plan, just because I'm almost out of time. Has identified tourism as a key sector to assist in driving enhanced economic development for the destination. They have assembled internal and external resources to create a tourism master plan. The plan is a strategy, strategic assessment, and vision process that provides a design framework for how the tourism product sector and experience would define Boynton Beach destination. It is an ongoing engagement platform where the tourism industry, the community, and its stakeholders come together to envision, plan, and act and manage Boynton Beach's visitors, economy, and share success, and will serve as a roadmap for branding, marketing, promotion, programming, facilities, and infrastructure that will grow a substantial volume of new and repeat visitors to the destination. As this particular next screen will show, this is the task force. You see, we have a manager and others. We have a theme of tourism development. Retail shopping and attraction and house. Food and beverage. Urban planning, and even a committee of one by the one and only Rob Jager. We have a consultant. This is the task force that will be dealing with a tourism master plan. And I am certainly excited about that. I'm going to stop by sharing at this time and go back and just say in closing, Boynton, the the business resources in the city of Boynton and the CRA. The CRA has a commercial improvement grant matching funds to assist a business or property owner with improvements to the exterior or the interior of commercial property units. And a commercial rent subsidy grant, matching fund, which reimburses a commercial entity half of their monthly rent payment up to a maximum amount depending on the category of business for a twelve-month period. There are a lot of exciting programs that are going on in Boynton, and I'm very proud to be a part of this excitement. That, ladies and gentlemen, is my Boynton Beach. Oh, and one other thing that I've learned before we go off into a Q and A period is what I discovered. Never go walking in the woods without your protection. So having said that, I have with me this morning my protection. Mr. David Scott, the city's director of economic development and strategic, and Mr. Michael Simon, executive director of Boynton Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, CRA, who would help answer questions and clean up the mess that I may have made. Thank you, Rob, and it's back to you.
All right. Thank you. That was a lot of good information. If you have any questions, go ahead and put them in the chat box. I have a couple for you as I listen to you speak. I know you mentioned that Guacago Place that's new. My wife and I went there a couple of weeks ago. It was really pretty good. I was, and I'm happy to see some of the other restaurants coming. So they like, well, I like that. That's gonna be fun. Um, listen, one of the rumors that I've heard is is that you're, you might be running for mayor someday here soon. So I I thought I'd just throw that out there now. Just, you know, is that even possible? Is that gonna happen? What's going on with that?
Well, at this point, I'm throwing it back to you. Uh, it may not reach you because you never say no. But as it stands right now, the answer to your, Rob, is no. I do not, I do not plan. But who knows? I'm a politician.
Understand. You know, I had one of the other questions that I had was, um, how how actively are is Boynton Beach um, working to try to recruit even some smaller corporate headquarters that could potentially grow? And where would they potentially go? I know you listed off a whole bunch of spaces and a lot of residential, but is there any thoughts to adding corporate headquarters kind of thing?
Yes, there is, and and I'm going to yield to Mike Simon, who's the CRA, and to to respond to that. Mike, are you there?
I sure am. Thank you, Commissioner Hay. You know, Rob, that's a good question, and I I kind of would also defer to David Scott and to John Dergan because the the space needed to recruit some type of a corporate entity into the city of Boeing, which of course encompasses the Sierra District, is is very limited in the downtown, let's say, in the Sierra Corridor. Not to say that there there might be small companies, and there are quite a few small companies that currently exist in our light industrial area and along, let's say, the federal highway corridor. But anyone that would need any substantial square feet, really almost anything above five thousand square feet right now, I couldn't accommodate in the in the Sierra District. And nobody, unfortunately, unless that corporation was going to build their own uh, facility, there is, there is no one planning on building, let's say, spec office of any square footage that would be able to recruit, you know, any type of of substantial uh, corporate entity like that. That that area, and that's why I kind of bring David and John in, that that type of square footage and that type of of space, uh, if it doesn't currently exist in, let's say, uh, the high-risk area or uh, the Congress Avenue corridor, perhaps some of the the larger, you know, Woolright Extension or Boynton Beach Boulevard or what have you, Gateway. Uh, that's going to be, I think, the spot to try to build square footage of any of any substantial size. So the answer from my perspective in the East End is I don't see anything like that, unfortunately, occurring on the near horizon. Um, unless there's some momentum to change some of the the projects that are out there that are currently mixed use. But maybe David can address the the ability of space for that Western End.
Yeah, and even if it's there's potential growth in that area, like, is there ever a comment or uh, a goal to get there at some point, even though it may not be available today?
Um, sure, I can jump in. Yeah, we have, actually, we do have quite a few small, um, I would say, corporate headquarters. They're very quiet. Some are more IT-related. Um, so they exist in the quantum, quantum area. Um, we've been approached by a few other, um, businesses or interests bringing the headquarters here. And as Mike said, that the the space that we have is mostly the quantum areas as well. Sometimes we end up sending them a little further west, maybe outside of the corporate limits of Boynton Beach. But we feel that as long as they're here and near Boynton and and um, we could, we can benefit from the the business by creating jobs here for Boynton Beach residents, even if they're located just outside our corporate limits. So, um, in addition, we do continue to work with the BDB. So whenever Kelly Smallridge has an interest, she she does work with us uh, to identify locations within the within our corporate limits. So, um, we do encourage that. Going forward, the CRA, Mike Simon and I are working on a project for next fiscal year, which would engage someone to help us recruit uh, businesses through retail, actually creating a retail strategy. Although there's a company called Retail Strategies, I'm careful to say that we are creating a retail strategy that will hire a firm that will specifically recruit and identify those businesses to fill spaces within and within our corporate limits. So there's a partnership between the CRA to do that, to be more more intentional uh, with finding a Whole Foods or whoever that who's looking for space, identifying, putting together a package that sells Boynton to that to that corporate business.
Okay, good. That's good information. Um, in terms of the incubators, the incubator piece that you talked about, um, is there a way that other business owners or other outside folks that are in the community can help those folks that are in the incubator? In other words, my impression of an incubator is, as you described it, it was a little difficult because I think we had a little bit of an internet connection on some of the things you had said, that, yeah, they're kind of early on in their business, they're they're starting up, or they're early, or they need some sort of a growth strategy. Is there a way that other businesses in the community could plug in and help rather than be a part of the incubator on the assistant side, be able to assist? Is that any any sort of conversation going on there, or is that even possible?
Be before Mike and others chime in, I I want to say that to your question, yes, there is. Uh, we've talked, uh, I know I've talked with the, uh, Coalition of Clergy, the churches, some of the pastors, and some of the other businesses that are around here, and they're willing uh, to these new entrepreneurs by the hand and share with them their background and knowledge to get them started. And I'm very encouraged by hearing hearing that because one of the reason that you don't, we don't always get the response that we are looking for because I found out that people are just afraid. They don't know how to go about filling out the forms and doing this and and all the requirements, paperwork that they need. And and when you have someone that's already in business, uh, you have some some of these retired people willing to come out of the retirement to assist in any way they can to to help the community as a whole, that's a good thing. Uh, because it takes, it it takes, it's a very frightening when you've never been there before, but you have the desire. So, um, to to, that's a good question. I'm glad you asked that because we need, there's a place for for everyone, especially those who have the abilities. Uh, and there's just a matter of asking them to come out and help, even those who are in business right now um, are willing to to reach out and and share their knowledge base. So, uh, I don't know if Mike or David want to chime in on that.
I, I would suggest, Rob, that we we definitely have space for that. Um, I think one of the biggest opportunities, one of the largest opportunities is our, like, the Business Over Coffee, those networking events where we make connections. Uh, as you know, we started our business over coffee in the city, and I know the Chamber has one syrup's very similar. But we made those connections, and Michelle has been there and a few others, and they've actually made some great uh, business deals together. So just bringing people in the room helps facilitate that. So I would encourage those, you know, through those types of events that we encourage those small businesses, those startups, which do come, as you were, do come to those networking events. That's the way they they really can make those personal connections. And then once they make their connections, the city, we, the city is just a facilitator. And we'd like to let them naturally grow together and make those, make those, build those relationships, as you know, as long-term relationships.
David, if you would give out the information on how they can join, like, get a, become a part of, uh, Business Over Coffee?
Sure, if you, you can email me. We have our Business Over Coffee for the city of Boynton Beach every Thursday. Uh, I'm sorry, every every first Thursday of the month um, at eight AM, uh, we we do it through Zoom now. We used to do it at the fire station, but we're still, we're still virtual. Um, so just email me, Scott D, S C O T T D, at B B F L dot U S.
All right, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else that has any other questions? If you want to just unmute and uh, ask it, I don't have a problem with that at all. We have such a small group here right now. Otherwise, I'll turn it back over to Jonathan.
Well, you know, I just want to, maybe David or Commissioner Hay, you could just retouch on the grants that's that are still available. I know we had some audio interruption during that point in time. And I think that's important for for the local businesses to realize there's still funds available if necessary. So I don't know who wants to take first to swing at that.
Commissioner, you want to be the?
Yes.
Take it, and I'll bring John in because John's, John's the boots on the ground, just chugging away processing it. What the commission set aside three hundred thousand dollars from CDBG money for COVID-related damages from the pandemic for small businesses. They have ten thousand dollars, ten thousand dollar grants. We have processed, John, about twenty so far. Um, and so that leaves, you know, several dollars still available. So right now, we would encourage those that are located within the city corporate limits, but outside of the CRA uh, to apply through whyboynton.com, W H Y boynton dot com. Uh, John, you want to just talk, give a little more detail?
Yeah, no problem. Good morning. My name is John Dergan. I'm the Economic Development Manager here for the city of Boynton Beach. So just to add on to what David said, uh, the commission budgeted around three hundred thousand dollars uh, for this program. Uh, the CDBG funds come from HUD um, from the federal level, and they were a part of the CARES Act, and we, the city did receive some funding. Uh, the grants are up to ten thousand dollars, and that all depends on your expenses. The business can use those funds for either payroll, their commercial utility bills, uh, their commercial rent or mortgage if they own the building. Uh, they can use it for any inventory that was purchased, but that inventory has to be due to COVID- nineteen. So this is all COVID- nineteen related. And then any sort of safety equipment, whether that's PPE equipment that was purchased because of COVID- nineteen, you can be reimbursed for those funds. Um, and it all depends on your, say, for example, if you were to apply for for rent, you could use it for all five of those categories. Um, but the grant is a max of up to ten thousand dollars. Um, for your rent and utilities, we would get a a a rent payment stub from you, and based on what that amount was, we would pay your landlord directly. So you, like, the the business owner would receive those funds directly. They would be paid directly to the landlord and the utility company, whether that's FPL or the city, if if we're providing the water. Um, but the but the other expenses would go directly to the business owner. So, for example, for your payroll, um, we're asking for, and and I know Commissioner Hay um, touched on this. The trouble we're having is a lot of businesses just don't have their paperwork and documentation in order, which has taken, the process has taken a little longer to go through. So, for example, your payroll expenses, we're gonna need some sort of nine forty-one or any sort of form that you submit to the IRS that kind of shows your payroll expenses. Um, because the funds are coming from CDBG, they're very strict on what type of documents that that are used for the program because we have to request that funding from um, from HUD, and there are very specific guidelines that we have to follow. So it's a, it's a unique program. It's it's not like the the county program, the restart grant program, which was fantastic, where the they kind of had to process that as quick as possible and disperse those funds. We have to have a lot of documentation in order for us to receive those funds, then we can give it out to the business. So, um, have the, uh, your twenty nineteen tax returns ready, the, any, any sort of IRS um, payroll forms, nine forty-one, nine forty forms, and then any sort of receipts or um, invoices you receive for your inventory or PPE equipment or any sort of safety equipment that you purchase that those are probably the easiest that we've dealt with, but the the rent utilities and the payroll has been the most difficult. And then the the business also has to demonstrate a loss of revenue due to COVID- nineteen. So we're we're gonna ask for like a profit and loss statement for the first two quarters of twenty twenty. So that's from January to June to kind of see that you've lost revenue. We we know most businesses have have lost revenue and they struggle during this time. But again, we just have to have that documentation so we can show that to HUD, so we can receive those funds and disperse them to the businesses. So if you have any questions, I'll put my information in the chat. If you have anybody who's interested, please give me a call. I can walk you through it. Um, the application's online. Everything's electronic. You can send all your documentations and Please give me a call. I can walk you through it. The application's online. Everything's electronic. You can send all your documentations and upload them. With your application online. If if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. Again, that's whyboynton.com. You can apply. Yeah, thank you so much.
How many do we have processed so far?
So process so far. So they're going from from the economic development department and I'm bringing them down to community improvement with LaShay, where she handles the CDBG funding. So currently, we actually have, we have 22 that qualify. I probably have six that are processed where they have everything. But again. It's not, we're not sure if most of them will get that that $10,000. It all depends on your your rent costs and your payroll costs and what documents you submit. So we're still working with with businesses. We have 22 that that applied and go through that process that are currently going through that process and you have six that have like. Completed that process and we're now in the community improvement stage of it. So there are plenty of funds still available.
John, that that was, you know, 22 times 10, that's, you know, 220. You still have some some wiggle room in there for some additional people to apply. So please give them the, give them the information and get them in.
And there is plenty of funding still available. Just I'll make that clear.
And as far as the CRA grants are concerned, the the commercial improvement grant is available currently. On a first come, first served basis and we are, I guess. Safe to say that the September agenda of approvals will. Almost certainly deplete the remaining funding for this fiscal year, but it's great that it's September and in October we'll have a new a new funding. Amount if the board approves the budget of about 400,000, 450,000. That commercial grant is for interior and exterior improvements. It's a tiered program, so certain businesses like a restaurant are in the tier one and they, an office might be in the tier. Two and then there's conditional use businesses in tier three, which get the least amount of funding. That grant ranges from 15,000 to 50,000, depending on the tier, and those are matching. Grant funds from the CRA. So the business that gets 50 has spent 100 or more in order to max that grant out. And then we have our rent subsidy grant, which pays for 50% of a of the business's monthly rent for 12 months. Again, a tiered, excuse me, a tiered system of grant maximums with currently, I think, the the max grant. For the tier one businesses, so it's about 1750 a month. So again, if somebody's rent is. You know, 4,000, they're going to get 1750 toward that from us on a monthly reimbursement. We've changed that. From quarterly to monthly reimbursement during this particular time. And this year alone, not including the million dollars that the the board approved. To assist the 100 businesses with the $10,000 COVID rapid response, if you will, assistance. That was a forgivable loan. So it. It was given out to the businesses as a $10,000 loan and they had to, they had a year to bring back. Evidence of that $10,000 being utilized for some of the things that John mentioned. Payroll, utilities, inventory. That that is an easy thing for them to accomplish. Obviously, that 10,000 went very quickly for most businesses. And then it converts to a grant. So it incentivizes them to come back and show us where the money went, which then we can utilize. That information to promote the success of it and also establish that there was success in it. And it also releases them of any obligation, you know, for to pay back the loan if after a year they haven't come back. So that was a million dollars for the 100 businesses we assisted in about a three and a half, four week period. But just in the two grants I mentioned, the commercial improvement grant and the rent subsidy grant, this year alone is, I think, just over $950,000. So we we almost gave out literally in a year, $2 million in assistance. With CRA funding for for our local businesses and those are all Cere district businesses. You know, so it's been a very successful year that way, even though. A lot of the funding, at least half of it, of course, went during the the this brutal time of the pandemic. But we'll be fully funded again for next year for the grants and we are having a lot of openings. I don't know how they're, how they're working through the the chamber. I. I've been meaning to ask that question. Before we leave today, I'm glad I'm remembering it now, just to to say that that we as a CRA and our our business development department are trying to promote. These businesses that are that are opening that we might be assisting, right? So we're giving our grants, we're getting to know them. We know when they're going to open or they're gonna, they're planning their little. Soft or or hard opening and and we're trying to be there with our little video camera and, you know, promote, we might get Commissioner Hay or the mayor to do a ribbon cutting. I don't know if those folks are members of the chamber or how much of that is going on with COVID now, Jonathan, but. I just want you all to know that even if if you're not aware that they're occurring because they're not a member of the chamber. That is something that we're doing on our own to draw attention to these new businesses that are opening, even if they are trying to do a lot themselves, you know, if we're there just to. Add more social media attention, we're happy to do it. So.
Great, thank you, Mike. You know, I I want to give credit to you guys and the city. And when you look at Palm Beach County, I think Wayne Beach was the second municipality. And definitely, I think, remains the highest that helped its local businesses financially, dollar wise. And it's a big kudos to the leadership from you, Lori and David, and of course, our commission and CRA board. So thank you. In regards to. Our ribbon cuttings, we we just have dipped our toe back into that water a little bit. We're doing them on Fridays and, you know. You know, the social distance policies and limiting the number of people in the picture as I'm sure you guys are. So we're willing to help out in any way possible as well. With that, I want to thank Commissioner Hay. Always a great conversation with you, always, you know, great information. You know, Woodrow indicated that Mike Simon and David Scott were his bodyguards, but everybody really knows it's Mildred. You see them walking on Congress Avenue. She's she's right next to him. She attends every commission meeting and CRA meeting. And so Mildred's the real bodyguard, but.
That's true.
That was a good one.
Yeah.
That was a good one.
So thank you, everyone, for joining us. I hope you enjoyed today's program. As I mentioned, you can see this program and many others that we record and repost on our our YouTube page. Thank you for our, to our chair, Rob Jager. Rumor has it, maybe he'll run for mayor too. With that, enjoy your Thursday. Have a great day and we hope to see you on a future Zoom. Take care, everyone.
Thank you.
Good to everybody.
You got my vote, Rob.
Bye bye.